Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to the January 16th meeting of Hyde Park Planning Board. You know all the exits around the room, so please join me as we salute the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, I'd like to just thank the town board. In the reorganization meeting that happened after our last meeting, I was reappointed as chairman. And I want to thank them for --
Yay!
And thank you guys, but thank them for trusting me with the authority to continue to guide our little ship here.
Ten-year term?
No, this is just -- the chairman has a one-year term every year. And that also reminds me that Ann and I are entering our 14th years this year. So congratulations to us. The first item on the agenda is a continued public hearing for Enclave Cellar Farm. The applicants are seeking site plan and special use permit approval to create a cellar array on Cream Street. May I get a motion to reopen the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? The applicants are not here this evening. They asked me if they should appear. We are waiting to hear from the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service so we can conclude seeker. I need to point out, so that anyone in the audience or television viewing audience might realize that because the Department of Interior is shuttered, so is the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, which means that the numerous amounts of cellar farms that we have as proposed in the town at this time will all be on a delay because the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will not be able to review their projects. U.S. Fish and Wildlife is involved because the state energy agency that provides funding requires it, that's NYSERDA. So we're still waiting to hear from U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We are also, I believe, awaiting to hear from DEC. I had some contact by telephone with the reviewer who indicated that they are reviewing it, that they had no problems with it being lead agency. I pointed out that the time for them to object to us being lead agency has long since passed, and that we may have to take action before we hear from them. I'm not sure what's going on there, so. But at any rate, they requested that we adjourn this to February 6th, so first, any comments from the board or consultants?
Nope.
Ms. Axelson, Mr. Zataro, you believe we're ready to take action fairly soon if we can just resolve seeker, correct?
That's -- yeah. The last time I wrote a review letter, that was what we had discussed, was that everything could be conditions of approval, but that we just couldn't conclude seeker. That was the dilemma, so.
So I hope everyone will join me in wishing that the government organizes itself and gets up and running with paid workers again soon. Any other comments from the board? I get a motion to adjourn this to February 6th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A side note, that the motion passes. The reason why they requested February 6th is that, as we all know, they'll be unable to cut down trees. Most of the area where this is going to be placed is already, the trees have been gone, but they need to do some other tree clearing, and DEC now frowns on tree clearing from March 31st to October 31st. So they'd like to come in, if they still haven't heard from Fish and Wildlife, to discuss what can be done. I'm looking at the consultants, because I don't think anything can be done, that we can authorize this unless we somehow heard from DEC to say that they're, that they agree. But even then, I'm not sure how, so just put on your creative thinking hats on that one. You're looking creative, which is good.
Well, I was thinking about what we did for the last cellar application, where we hired an outside consultant to review the work. That's one option, I suppose, but it ended up that Fish and Wildlife did get back to us after the fact, and we didn't get a definitive answer from the consultant.
No, because Fish and Wildlife, as I recall, has different standards than what the consultant did in terms of certain bats, some of them long-eared. But in this case, another bat seems to be an issue. This is bog turtles. So I'll, before we meet again, I'll speak to the applicant consultants and see if that's something that they're interested in pursuing to kind of push this along.
Because the board has reviewed bog turtle studies numerous times, so I think that with DEC's comments and perhaps an outside consultant's, you should be in a position to make a seeker determination.
When we did that, when we last hired the outside consultant, we used AKRF, but that was before Morsus Associates was joined to CPL team. Do you have people now who can review?
We don't have a wildlife biologist, I don't think.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think --
Nope.
I don't think that's --
It's not one of those things.
Try Hudsonia.
Okay, yep. We have Hudsonia. So I'll speak to Mr. Castimento and see. Thank you for that suggestion, Ms. Paladaro. The next item on the agenda is Camp Victory Lake Master Plan and Phase One. Mr. Rinia just made it in. You may have assumed that we weren't going to have --
There's a short public hearing.
Were you seeing how many people, how many members of the public came to speak?
I would assume it's a full house.
So at the last meeting, Mr. Rinia had submitted, in addition to showing a new location for the church, had also made some small revisions as to some parking areas, et cetera, and since it was fairly new for us to see that, I decided that we should workshop this again after we've all had time, a good time to review the changes that were made. Mr. Rinia, let me turn it over to you.
Good evening, everybody. At the last meeting, we had discussed the revised Phase One plan, which was this area here. So then, as I had mentioned, we submitted a revised master plan to try to take into consideration the comments that we received, and some of those comments that we received were, starting at the front, this is Crumelbo Road here. The comment was, the outer loop road went around, it came around the backside of the buildings, or the roadside of the buildings, if you would, and the comment was made to look at the master plan, take these buildings, pull them closer to the road, and then to Crumelbo Road. So from the county road, you would see more buildings and less of an internal road. So we went ahead and did that, and we think that it created actually a very nice road connection here. This is the downtown Victory Lake area, and then this was all recreation in this area. So in looking at this, we think that this will actually be better for the camp, because with this outer loop road here and here, they could actually shut these down for when they're having events, and they could use the road for part of their events as well, too. So we think that it actually makes great sense. It's a win-win for the town side of things, where you see more buildings from the county road, but then for them as well, too, where that road is placed, it kind of brings it more central, and they could actually use that for other events. And then the other area that we had looked at was parking. The comment was made that you didn't think that we had enough parking, or the master plan wasn't looking at enough parking. So what we did was, we first looked at it and said, out in the front here, we thought that we probably had too much parking, hardscape parking, right in the front that you're seeing as well, too. So we went ahead and said, well, we have to make some of this grass overflow parking. So on a normal basis, when you drive by, you see a lot of green. And then, then we looked around, well, where could we actually put a hardscape parking lot? And looking at the contours and looking at where the roads are, we came up with this area here. We originally had a smaller parking area here. We took this road that was here, and I think it came in through this area. We pulled it out. There's a steeper grade here, and then to develop this into a hardscape area of parking for the future, and then you don't really see it from anywhere. It can be hidden in the back. There's plenty of room here for us to do the stormwater treatment that we would need to do, and then leaving just a small hardscape parking area here in the front next to the gatehouse. But like I had said, all the rest of this would become just grass overflow parking for any large events. And then the other comment was about bus parking. Where would we park buses? And the suggestion was made to try to find a spot for it on the loop road someplace. So what we ended up coming up with was, this is the wastewater treatment plant that exists now. Across from that, we thought that this would be a good location to park buses, because there's not many other things that you're going to do right across from the wastewater treatment plant, even though it's, it's a nice-looking building when you drive by, and I know members have been there. So we thought that this was a good spot to do that, but then also, this works out nice because it's closer to Phase One, so we figured that we can incorporate this into Phase One, and then that can be the bus parking that we have in the beginning, and it would go along with this building in the front.
I will note, just in case the audience is wondering, that buses would drop their passengers off and continue on to the parking, for the most part, I would imagine.
Yes.
Because I remember when we did this before with bus parking, someone said, now you've made them walk so far. No, that's not the purpose here. So, thank you, Mr. Rinia. In the interim, Morsus says, excuse me, CPL team issued its review memo. You'll need to respond to the bulk of those comments. Some of them, I think you've actually already incorporated into this. They were based on the initial master plan, so, because I went through and looked, and I could check off some myself as we go. So let me first turn it over to the consultants. Ms. Axelson, any further comments, or do you want to say?
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the board and to Mr. Rinia for being patient. The review took a while to get out. It was just a crush of work that happened all at once. No, you know, anyway. So what we tried to do in this review was to try to paint a way forward so that the board can do a sort of generalized seeker review, and then each phase will be covered under that. And it also looks like a big laundry list, but the intent here is to try to come up with the maximum thresholds for various things on the use of the site, so that that can be noted in the seeker and planning review as we move forward, and as long as things fit within those established thresholds when we get there. It should facilitate every little project that comes forward after this first site-specific one. I'm not going to go over, you know, switching the building and parking. I guess, was this emailed to us, or?
This plan?
The new, the new plan?
Yeah.
This was submitted at the last meeting?
We had the small.
Quickly, very small, on New Year's.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry, it was New Year's Eve, yes.
Yeah, it was a New Year's Eve submission deadline.
We saw, we saw it at the first meeting, because that was January 2nd, because it had been, the office was closed on January 1st.
I guess I'll see it in whatever the new set is. I don't think we have it, but, so if you could email it.
Oops.
It wasn't, it wasn't a set, it was just when she went.
No, 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 I know that. I just.
Yeah, it was just the master plan. We submitted a revised Phase One, single plan, concept, and then a revised master plan.
Right. Well, it looks like you did some good work here.
But yeah, I can, I'll email that.
Thank you.
So what I, the way I structured the comments, it's all master plan stuff up front to try to establish those thresholds. We have a few questions about existing conditions. I don't know if I want to get into the weeds on this one, but, you know, one of the things we were trying to point out is to kind of show us as much as you can and tell us as much as you can in tabular summary about the existing conditions, because I think you do, for example, have some impervious services on the site that I'm assuming are going to be, you know, changed, so you might as well take credit for whatever you have. For example, example, the, whatever those concrete pads are that look like they might have been cabin pads, or?
I think they were tent, for camping.
Tent pads? And I'm, it looks like they're, they're all going to be taken up at some point, replaced with something else, so. And then on the Phase One plans, it wasn't really clear where the phase begins and ends, and that, you know, so you'll have to take, you know, a look at that. The other thing I noticed is that on the phasing plans, there were some areas that were definitely numbered items meant for improvement, loop roads, pedestrian ways, et cetera, that didn't appear to be in one phase or another. So in order for us to get the whole threshold of the entire development, we'll need those to be stuck in somewhere. Anyway, I know we gave you quite a laundry list. The fully AF form.
Well, it's comprehensive.
It's very comprehensive.
Yeah, no, this is great to get in the beginning, especially.
There is one, and I really focused more on your narrative in terms of seeker review and planning and zoning review, because the narrative was very helpful. And then I just had some comments on the end of the fully AF form. But one of the things I noticed that sounds a little nitpicky, but I've run into this on projects that I've done EAFs for, is that if you have structures that are over 50 years old, that, consult with SHPO, find out what they want you to do. What our cultural resource person had to do was go out into the field, take a look themselves, see if they were worthy of note, and take pictures. And then they submitted the pictures, gave them a little bit of narrative, and that's how they were able to get a write-off. And that's probably what'll happen, because I believe, whatever these structures are, most of them are probably going to be removed or relocated, so.
We're made to look a lot at it.
1954 and 1960, those are your ancient things.
So before I go on to Mr. Zataro, I just want to point out that I believe, I'm kind of speaking for you, Mr. Rinia, I don't mean to, but I know with this, you've kind of come to us to work with this first on broad strokes on the concept plan before you get into the weeds or the details. Some of what is in the memo about requiring more contours accessory, et cetera, for existing conditions, I think you've been waiting for that, to see if we're more comfortable with a certain kind of broad layout here, that's what we've been going toward.
Yes.
Right. So the memo, more or less, will take you, as Liz said, to the next step, so we can get more into the real detailed review to conclude seeker ultimately. One of the items that Ms. Axelson pointed out, and I know we discussed it last time, was the need for a traffic impact study, based again on the maximum numbers. I think I last time said, kind of planning for the worst occasion, but I rephrased that as planning for the best occasion, when it's used the most, because we believe this is going to be a very attractive site at full build-out, and you're probably going to have a lot of interest from time to time in using it. In addition, some of the uses, most of this is outdoor, so it looks like it'll be peak in the summer, but some of the areas, like maybe the spa area back in through here, those might be used throughout the year, so we'll need to all take a look at how we think this will be utilized in the future once it is all built out. But it's an excellent memo, and it was very detailed, and I happen to know that you did get a lot of stuff in Hyde Park, from Hyde Park in November, that just got thrown, and they were all needing detailed reviews, so thanks again. Anything else?
Just one quick thing, that one of the lines I put in right up front. In some of the narrative, it mentioned camp, that it was sort of two uses, and just from my understanding of the site and how it's used, the camp aspect is all part of the religious use. So I really just looked at this as a religious use with various activities that were related to worship, recreation, fellowship, et cetera, so.
Okay.
And I agree.
I think probably some of our description was just making it clear that it also acts as a summer camp as well, too, and you don't have to be a member of the religion itself to actually, like, have your child go to that summer camp, because there are local people that live nearby, and their children go to the summer camp. So that was part of it, but I think from on a whole, you're.
The majority of it's utilized by members of the congregation, but you have made clear, and so have they in all my years of talking with them, that there are members of Hyde Park who utilize the site as well.
Right. Yeah, they're not, and they want to be clear that they're not shut down to only members in their congregation, that they're open to everybody.
That's great. Mr. Zataro, any comments?
Yeah, I helped, I helped Liz with certain aspects. I went through some of the water in the sewer, the drainage, so I provided some, some comments there. So, you know, we talked about that we're going to beef up the long form, we're going to include some reports in the back, so, you know, we outlined those. We could just talk about the traffic, not a minute. The chairman had mentioned about, you know, this is not your typical, typical traffic, you know, impact, where it's going to be everyday traffic. So I think what we should do is whoever Rich is going to have, look at this, that you should come up with like an outline of how they think that they want to go and do it, and then circulate it.
Right.
Circulate it to all of us. We can discuss it either by email or at another meeting, you know, whatever, so that we kind of agree on, you know, the scope, because again, this is a little bit out of like the norm of, you know, it's not going to be, you know, Monday through Friday, like peak hour, you know, peak AM, peak, you know, PM, it's just, you know, a different thing. So if you could get with, you know, whomever that you're going to use, and we'll come up with, you know, a scope, and then we can agree.
It's a great idea.
And I think it can be simple, because I think it is going to be basically on, when you have a peak event, or like several peak events, I'm sure every, every like event's not going to be the same like size, there may be some intermediate ones, you know, I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, you're, you're right on track.
So.
What my thinking was, you kind of have to look at the.
Couple of different.
Right now, the winter time period, there's really nothing going on.
Right.
A summer camp time period where there's a lot of action, but it's, the daytime action, drop off in the morning, pick up in the afternoon, but then look at a couple of their, their key activity or bigger, larger events, and really try to take a hard look at the peak event.
And, and, and it may end up where it's like, maybe there's a, maybe there ends up to be a need, and we've had this happen on other projects, that there's a need for some, depending on the larger events, to have some traffic control people, you know, out there. Of course, if it's on, you know, the county road, it'd have to be like a permit to have, you know, the people out there, you know, directing like traffic, but again, that's something that we'll get to as.
Yeah, and I think that they've, they've talked about, that they do that, that they hire the Hyde Park Police Department to help them with some of the regular events.
Right, it has to be, it has to be like official.
Right. Yeah, yeah, they can't just.
Can't be URI out there.
Go stand out on the county road with your own.
Can't be URI directing traffic, no. So, were you going to say something, Victoria?
Oh, just on the, the traffic impact report, I'm just a little nervous about treating something as seasonal, because once we, once you build them, they can be used year-round.
Yes.
And so, I mean, unless you're going to be, have a restriction on the permit that says can't be used in the winter months, I want to make sure that the traffic report's comprehensive and it considers year-round.
Yeah, and I guess I wasn't, I wasn't meaning winter months that nothing would be at the sanctuary, because we did actually have that discussion, and the chairman was very clear about it. If you build it, they will come, which, you know, that, I, I agree with that, too. I was just taking like a very low-use period, so that we could kind of see, you know, that there are going to be times when there's nothing going on there, and then there's times when there's a lot of daytime activity, and then there's these big events. So that was kind of my thinking, that, and that would go with the scope, that we kind of pick those times that we think should be studied.
Okay. I mean, because I think, I was having trouble following exactly how many units are being built and how many people, additional people are coming to the site, so if you could, I mean, I know it's in Liz's.
That goes with Liz's, the tabular format.
Yeah, so I think that information will help us when we put together the scope for the review.
Right, and we've started working on that now with the camp, start, you know, trying to get information from them, such as, you know, this building, how many people sleep in it actually during the summer? And working on a spreadsheet to build that out, so we can have all that information.
Actually, if I can sort of butt back in here, I, I have an example from another camp facility where they created a matrix based on the kind of stuff you're seeing in that review letter, where they're showing all, it's like an inventory of all the existing conditions, square footage, beds, et cetera, and numbers of people.
Exactly.
And then the proposed condition, and it all just kind of fits on a plan sheet, and I, I could email that as a sample if that's all right with the board.
Yeah, if it's something that works.
Yeah, and it was based on a Fleetmeier originally, you know, planned type thing.
Oh, with the project over in the town of Mala, Mala?
Yeah, Mala.
Yeah.
I think that sounds great, and it provides some clarity as we move forward. And yes, I'm going to credit Ms. Wasser, who actually said that, I believe if you build it, they will come, because the size of the church or the sanctuary is so large that we assume there'll be weddings and perhaps other events there that.
Royal weddings.
Well, just that they can be utilized, because it's going to be a big enough space that.
And new.
And new, I can't imagine people just wanting to sit there empty and not being utilized at the expense they're going to go to, to erect it, so. Ms. Paladaro, any other comments?
Just a couple more.
Yep.
Rich and I will also work together as far as, we'll need to, we need to get some kind of a conceptual stormwater plan for the master plan, and then as each, as each individual phase comes in for detailed site plan approval, then he'll do a formal stormwater pollution prevention plan, and then as each subsequent phase comes in, build off of the initial stormwater plan. But as far as for, you know, the master plan, I'm thinking that Rich and I can, because I don't want him to run, I don't want him to size, you know, every single stormwater basin, because, you know, they don't know yet, but I mean, as long as we can, as we can maybe break up, you know, the drainage areas, and just say, okay, you know, for this area, we can fit a stormwater basin over, like, in this area, and maybe just do some really crude preliminary stuff, just to say, yeah, that's a, that's a pretty good size, and that'll like fit. We're not going to get through routings and pre and post, and.
Right.
So we'll come up with something simple enough, but at least it's going to be enough that we can say, yeah, with the master plan, we'll be able like to deal with it, you know? So, and then just had a question on the, on the, on the water supply. They're classified now as a public water supply, right?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe so.
Okay. So, because the other thing that I, that I said to you last night in, in the email, and Liz, like, had put in there, you know, we just like to see what, you know, the permit is for each one, you know, the capacities, and, you know, it's hard to figure out what your flows are now, because they're so up and down, but I assume that there's an operator that submits like reports every, every month for both water and sewer, and so, you know, one of, one of the things that you had mentioned in the narrative was that, hey, once these, once these plants get to around 25,000 gallons a day, you know, or something, something to that effect, that then we would apply for like an expansion of, you know, the facility. So we could just get an idea of, you know, what the, what, you know, the permit is, what the flows are now, and it may just need to be on a 30-day like average, or something like that, you know, we'll figure it out. But I think we want to go and put in there about when, you know, these, these thresholds might happen, and when there's got to be an expansion of the plant, and the, and the other thing, and I don't know if it, you know, had made it in there or not, but, you know, there's probably obviously going to be an expansion of each, of each plant, maybe, although, you know, the sewer plant may have enough.
Well, the sewer plant has, is rated for 30,000.
Okay.
And my projection, if they were to build everything, is about 60 or 60,000.
So that's going to have an expand. So, so like as part of this, we want to look at the locations of each, where, you know, the water plant is, and, you know, the sewer plant, and just make sure that where they are, that it's viable to like expand. You know, we, just, you know, make sure we have enough room, it's not, it's not like right next to any, you know, wetlands, or something like, we just want to make sure that you'll be able to like expand whenever that, you know, you need to, so we'll, we need to come up, you know, with something on that. So I think that's, I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. I know that stormwater, when I first started, was a point that I thought that was really a big seeker issue. I've learned since that you can conclude seeker and not have all the stormwater nailed down completely, because you're either going to get a permit or not.
Yeah.
So I, I think the board will be comfortable moving forward with what you're talking about.
Yeah, we want to keep it, you know, simple, but we at least want to make sure that in the seeker findings, that we address it, so, and not make them go, you know, like too, too overboard, because it's going to, it's certainly going to change.
There's going to be changes of each phase as they come along.
Yeah, so we don't want to get crazy, so we'll work something out.
Great, of course.
No, you, you're interrupting.
One of the things that, I, I know that you've come up with a sequence of phases, and, and I think a heads up to the board and to you, that it's possible, once the district or whoever approves the master plan, I don't know what their process is, but maybe the sanctuary is Phase One, but you may end up with a benefactor that may be more interested in building another phase before whatever you've identified for two, so there's going to have to be some flexibility.
Yes. I would 100% agree with that, that.
Funding.
You know, after Phase One, it could be any phase.
Right, okay.
And it's just there just to give them a, a way to call them, you know, just give them a name.
Thank you. Ms. Paladaro?
Okay. Let's stick to the big picture items, but sticking with water and sewer, there's currently five lots, and so, for instance, the northern lot, is that going to have its own septic system, or is that proposed to be part of the, the big system for the site?
We haven't gotten to that, that level of detail yet, but I would suspect that one option for us to look at is to look at its own onsite system, since it is a separate lot, and it, and they have, right now, the existing house would have its own septic system, so that is a possibility, or it might be easier, depending on when they want to build that, if that was to work that into just pumping that to the sewer treatment plant, that, that could make sense as well.
Okay, because what I'm getting at is, you can't have your systems cross lot lines.
Yes. Yes, yeah.
And these are, these lots were created by a filed map, and so you do need subdivision to merge them back together. And so that's something that you'll have to consider as part of your phasing plan. When would the subdivision be appropriate?
Or couldn't they form a transportation corporation?
Well, yes, that's the other option, although I, I would doubt they would want to do that.
It's easier to murder, I mean, if they're gonna own it all, unless they had some ideas that they need a different entity within the church to own that for whatever reason, for, you know, it could be for insurance or liability reasons, if there's gonna be a, a wellness spot that has other services that the camp doesn't have, or, and I'm just guessing.
Right, so just keep that in mind moving forward, that may be an additional approval that's needed, and/or a transportation corporation approval from the town board. Um, and then I, I just want the board to consider, again, some of the design standards, uh, decide whether or not this meets them. So the parking on Crimble Bowl Lane, uh, one oh eight four point five two, says parking shall be located to the rear of front building line of the building it serves. On a corner lot, you have two front building lines. Um, parking shall not dominate any site, cannot have large interrupted areas of parking stalls, screening shall be required, and then also that the primary entrances to any building shall be oriented to the lot frontage, with the secondary entrance oriented to the parking plazas, parks, et cetera. So, you know, I just want you to keep that in mind as you go through your review. Uh, I reiterate the need for the traffic impact study, and to really pin down, uh, we can't really start the seeker process until we have an understanding of how many people are coming to the site, and, and what impacts that entails. Uh, I just wanna note that the Bog Turtle Study seemed to exclude the, the five northern lots, if I was reading it right.
It was a Blandings Turtle, uh, study?
Or, one of the studies, and then, so I just wanted to make sure that that was fine with everyone. It doesn't look like you're proposing much to servants in that area?
No, but would it have looked, or, I'll just point here. The, uh, Victory Lake is here, and the zone where the, where they had found that the turtles may wanna travel to was in this direction.
Okay.
So the, the main area, the trapping study was done at Victory Lake, uh, and then within the wetland areas in this direction. And the original, original master plan that I, that I had explained at the first meeting, had the sanctuary building actually in this area. So that was the first time that we ever even came in preliminarily, uh, to talk about it. And, um, when this became a potential for a Blandings Turtle travel corridor, that's when we said, okay, what we need to do is pull that out, that's how it arrived over here, and then keeping this as, as an open area with forest, and then with a camping area here.
Okay. Uh, just lastly, I haven't been to the site yet, are, are those stream crossings existing?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Okay, so, and they're not being changed?
Correct.
No.
Okay, that, that's it for now.
That's a good-
At this point premature to circulate.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Again, this is just, uh, Rich is wanting us to, to, when to get, I have feeling from the board as to whether or not they can now drill down on details based on a broad understanding of whether we like the, the general site, I guess I'll call it, the overall master plan. Uh, just a note, I talked to, actually, Victor, Ms. Paladro about this today. The entrance, primary entrance will be here, facing the parking lot. I believe there's a secondary entrance here on the lower level, if I'm correct, from the last meeting. Our code does say that entrances shouldn't, in essence, buildings shouldn't turn their backs on roads, and I believe this would probably be the primary, uh, roadway that the entrance should face onto. So it would be up to the board whether you wanna require a sidewalk going from all this parking over to there, or not. Uh, in addition, the screening of the parking, as we noted at the last meeting, there's an, uh, hillock, uh, well, a rock outcrop up here that would help, uh, provide screening for all this parking. And this is actually lower than the roadway here, so there's also a green space, uh, existing hedgerow of trees along here. If we supplement this with some plantings, then we would have screenings. We, we kinda discussed a lot of, of the standards that are in there, but the board would need to officially kind of opine that we would relax that standard, if we think that it's more logical to have the entrance here, right where most of the parking is. Um, but before I call on my colleagues, I for one really like the way this changed. I like this, the, the new kind of roadway along here, I like the parking being tucked away as far as possible. Um, this site, uh, along here, there's nothing existing anywhere near it. In addition, now you have green where you may have parking, but you're not gonna have parking dominate, because the nature of the use is such that you would only have the overflow parking as needed. So that when you drive down Crimble Bowl, you'd essentially see some attractive buildings, and not necessarily note that that's a parking lot, because, uh, depending on how you wanna, what, what do you wanna put underneath there, whether you wanna leave it grass, or put, um, the subsurface plastic, uh, whatever you wanna do. Uh, but it leaves it green and pervious, so, let me start, I'm gonna start unusually on my inside right. Ms. Dexter, any comments?
I, uh, appreciate, I would echo the chairman's comments, uh, in their entirety. And, uh, just thank you for really, uh, awesome turnaround, and just really incorporating pretty much everything you're hearing. So, that's all.
Mr. Oliver?
Again, thank you for your responsiveness, and, um, I, I think that, you know, adhering to the code on our entrance on the building, I, I don't see the sense in doing that, and I'm, I'm personally okay with the way you have it laid out. And, uh, thank you very much, I, I think, you know, the internal circulation looks really good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Napoli?
Happy New Year, I don't remember if I wished you a Happy New Year the last time you were here. Um, how many phases do you think will be involved?
Forget off the top of my head how many we had in the phasing plan.
That many, huh?
Honest, yeah, there was, I mean, we should give, we tried to take each one of the, the items and put them in there. Is that what it was, eighteen?
I think it's twenty-three. I think it's twenty-three.
Yeah, our, cause basically what Liz was saying is most likely what's gonna happen. There'll be a funder, a benefactor, or, uh, you know, that would say, hey, I'd like to, I'd like to fund this, or partially fund this, and, you know, get it going. So it could be anything.
Anything, okay.
Right.
And then as the sanctuary goes, it should probably jumpstart the rest of it. Exactly.
Naming opportunities, as it's called.
Yep, yep. Yeah, I, and I wanna thank also Liz, 'cause as always, she has a way of just bringing it all down into very nice itemized, and I go, oh, yeah, oh, yeah, right. Yeah, so she helped tremendously in refocusing. And the reason I asked for how many phases, 'cause innocently I was thinking maybe four or five, and if there was a way you could do the mass, do the master plan, but then also supply us, I was thinking in a much more organized way, this is phase one, in one colored, phase two is in a different color. So this way we could kinda see, but that goes right out the window.
No, we did something similar to that, with a highlighting.
Because it just helps to think about it.
You have the full size?
In the original submissions, the full set?
So we, we, we basically drew a bubble around and said this was a phase.
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Yes, yes, yeah, that makes, that helps tremendously to see.
And, and one of Liz's comments were that in between the bubbles, there's trails or paths, and-
Right, roads.
Basically, so we'll, you know, we'll tweak that and bring them together to, to make semblance of it, so it can be built. But that was the, the intent to, to, to bubble those areas.
Okay, thank you, that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Wasser, comments?
Um, yeah, thanks. Um, I echo the comments previously, and especially the improvement in the plan and the road connection, so, um, I'm happy to see that, and I appreciate the response. Um, just a few quick comments, um, regarding whether the building's back would front, whether the sanctuary, the back of the building would front one of the roads. I think one of the ways I would be open to seeing it oriented toward the parking depends on the architecture of the building.
Yes.
Right, so, you know, I think the, the better the architecture, the more likely we'd be willing to, I'll speak for myself, be willing to consider, you know, the door, um, the main entry to the, to the park, towards the parking area.
And, and I think, uh, with a building that big, um, it's more than likely for egress reasons, there's gonna have to be some doors there just for the, the emergency exits, which, on the architectural side, we could do some kinda, I'm picturing you could do some kinda featuring there, so it's maybe not the main entry door, but you-
Like a forefront?
You, yeah, you would see a door, and there'd be some detailing around it, uh, or multiple doors, but there'll be something more than just a blank wall, definitely.
And, yes, and, you know-
'Cause I know that a blank wall is not gonna be acceptable.
Some nice fenestration would be good.
Got it.
Um, so I wanted to, uh, mention that, um, you did mention that as you looked at the, the bus drop, the bus parking, that you might include it in phase one.
Yes, I think that's a definite.
And so, I'd like to see a revised phase one-
Yes.
To actually, now that, now that we're having this conversation, we're thinking about it, to get a revised phase one, uh, schematic layout. Um, and, and really what you might include in that. And then I had, um, I'm sorry if I missed someone in the papers, what is downtown Victory Lake? What is downtown Victory Lake?
It's supposed to be basically an outdoor type of recreation area, um, it-
It's, it's a central area where most of the children or young people come, they would actually play.
It's this area here, which is basically an open outdoor plaza.
Okay, so it's not like-
So it's supposed to be a big, a big gathering.
A campus center.
Yeah, a, a large outdoor gathering area.
Outdoor, okay, thanks, I just, I was just-
It was a new term, but I like it.
I, I did like it too.
Has a little bit of a Disneyland.
Yes.
You know, is there a post, maybe there's a post office, who knows, downtown, so, that's what I thought.
But it would be something that, that, people would head there, because, uh, you would be dorming on one side, you'd be eating the recreation facilities there.
No, you answered, it was recreational, as opposed to trying to incorporate a village within, within, so, thank you.
This is excellent. Brett?
I like the process, the way it's gone so far, and the changes, and the timing this, everything's gone on. My biggest question coming up now is to see your next look at the main sanctuary.
Okay.
I think that's, to me, that's the next, um, the agenda, to see, how's it gonna fit? How's it gonna look on that corner?
You're speaking of architecture?
The, the architecture, the whole thing.
Yeah, okay.
It's gonna be a big, what, sixty-one thousand square feet, something like that.
Yes.
It's gonna be a pretty big unit on that corner, and being a metal building, and I think as soon as we, as soon as I get to see the next pass-
Might not be metal.
No, yeah, as soon as we get to see the next pass at it, well, I think it'll help us all, it'll help me, and-
I agree.
See where we're going next.
You just jogged my memory, I think this is the largest new structure that we've, we're going to see built, uh, in terms of overall footprint. Um, the hotel is going to be big, but it's got a smaller footprint, it's going to be taller.
Well, keep in mind they're seeking a height variance as well, so.
Mm-hmm, ultimately, it looks as though it may be, it may need to be a height variance, uh, for the sanctuary. Ms. Weiser?
Uh, I echo my colleague's sentiments, and I just had one question, I know what downtown Victory Lake is. Um, between, um, downtown Victory Lake and building fourteen in that area, there, there's that orange, there's an orange circle in the center, and that, that, is that, is that gonna be a building? Is that part of a building? It doesn't have a number on it.
Oh, this?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I think this is just, and I'll double check to confirm, um, that this is an outdoor area, uh, that the whole thing would be an outdoor plaza.
Okay.
Unless for some reason they had thoughts of maybe-
A stage or something, or?
Yeah, having some, something there.
Okay.
Um, or maybe an open structure with a, with a roof on it to protect you from the sun, possibly.
Okay.
A gazebo.
Diane gets her gazebo.
And that's it, thank you.
Okay, so if I can summarize, and Ms. Wasser, I think you can speak for the board, that better architecture will help persuade us, the main entry along the parking area. Uh, it seems as though you heard from everyone that the new layout is acceptable. And if I can just take a moment to brag on my colleagues and, uh, our consultants, this is another case where the back and forth is really helping. I mean, Mr. Rini has said already that what we're suggesting is actually driving better design for their part too, so. I find this process really exciting, and I think that shows you when you have seasoned and dedicated volunteers up here, it really does make the process work better. It wasn't that it was a bad layout in the first place, it's just that it's now more code compliant in terms of what our code requires, and also seems just like it's going to be more welcoming and inviting to people, rather than you seeing cars first, and then not knowing what's going on until you go inside. Now you'll know more of what's in there as you go by, and then can find the parking, uh, afterwards. So you have now, I believe, all seven of us saying that the current layout is better. You've heard from the consultants, uh, in terms of what we'll need to have in the memo. You heard from Ms. Wasser also about redoing phase one, which I know you're going to do to add the parking, uh, for the bus parking inside there. And otherwise, I think that the next time you make a submission, we'll be looking forward to being a little bit more detailed in terms of responding to the CPL team memo, and also to, uh, perhaps even before that, coming up with a scope for the traffic impact study.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, this has been a long gestation, I know. I think you probably have had children that have grown now by now, since I first met with you on this project, but, or at least getting up there in age. Um, but it's nice to see that it's finally starting. I think this is gonna be one more thing that kind of helps put Hyde Park on the map for something exciting in terms of development, uh, along the way, so we'll wait to hear from you and get you back on the agenda when we do.
Yes, and what we're, just so everybody knows, what we're working on next is, uh, taking phase one, that, the area and the new layout that everybody is happier with, grading that out, uh, because that's gonna create our constraints. Then that's going to the architect, who's gonna work on the building, and then we'll be working on coming up with that traffic, uh, impact study scope.
Great.
So probably the first thing you're gonna hear from us is the scope.
That's what I would expect.
Yeah, we'll work together on the other items, water, sewer, drainage.
Yes.
You know, all the very important things in this project.
Of course.
Hey, without, hey, without water and sewer, you don't imagine a project.
Now, you do have, water and sewer is important, it's the underpinning for something this large and this ambitious. In addition, this all, as you said, needs to be roughly nailed down in advance, so, uh, as we go forward, because it's a big project, there's a lot that you're proposing here, even though when we see it on something like that, it doesn't look quite so big, when I think about the size of the site being well over a hundred acres, it's gonna be a lot. So, uh, we look forward to moving this forward, and thanks for coming in tonight, I'll see you shortly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And by the way, remember, as you, as the architect is, is working on this, if you'd like to have any offline meetings or send something just to suggest, we can always-
Yeah, if they have some samples and they're not sure which way to go.
Happy to work with you.
That'd be great.
Thank you. The next time on the agenda is, again, the enclave at Hyde Park, this is not for the cellar farm. The applicants have, have requested a ninety-day extension of time to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit approvals. What's happened here is some of the easements that need to be filed, some of the draft language, they're still awaiting, uh, grid numbers for the new parcels, so the legal documents have not been filed yet. They actually don't expire until February, and it may be that they don't even need the extension.
Tad, Tad and I are meeting with them on Friday morning.
But they are pursuing this just as a, just to be extra cautious?
Do you know if the, the first phases of the site plan have been signed? The ones that weren't subject to all those conditions, so the, um, the membership club?
Yes, that's how they got started.
Okay, so those have been started?
Yes, we moved some of the conditions over to different-
Right.
The model, yes.
Yeah, just the model.
Right, 'cause I, I specified that this was for phase four B membership club, and residential phases one through twenty-five.
Correct, so yes, I, I signed that because they've actually pulled a building permit and started on that one.
Okay.
The model home I'm talking about.
I just wanted to make sure, because those conditions were much less significant.
Correct, correct. So, uh, again, the applicants are not here this evening, does anybody have any questions about their request?
Nope.
Who has this file?
Resolution granting extension of the time to satisfy the conditions of site plan and special use permit, approval of the enclave formerly known as the Meadows Two Family Homes, and membership club. Phase four B of membership club and residence phases one through twenty-five. Um, resolution sixteen dash forty-nine L, whereas, 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 whereas. Now therefore, be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants the applicant a ninety-day extension of time in which to satisfy the conditions of the site plan and special use permit approval to and including May sixth, two thousand nineteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, thank you. Um, hasn't anyone had a chance to read the minutes from December nineteenth and January second?
Yes. Very well done.
Make it a motion to approve the December nineteenth minutes as submitted.
Some of-
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Ms. Wasser, you're recused from the next one, 'cause you were absent. Make it a motion to prove the-
Good stuff.
Yes, the January second minutes.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and make it a motion to adjourn.
Some move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.